...field zoning commission, April 11th, 2024. Pleasure to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Fire evacuation, should the fire alarm go off or you smell smoke even, you can exit the building our left to your right, to your rear, down the stairs in both cases, get yourself as far away as you can from the building. Thank you for that. Approval of the minutes from March 14th. Oh, let me make this bigger. Come on, there we go. Roll call, Mr. Secretary. Glad to see you tonight. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Cooper.
Here.
Walter Crizell is absent, and John Petronella is here.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. At this time, I'd like to take, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2024.
So moved.
Any discussion, corrections, amendments? None?
No, Mr. Chair, I was not present at the meeting, but I did watch it on YouTube, so I feel comfortable about voting, or, you know, acting on this and voting on it.
Thank you.
Just for the record.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, same.
Okay.
I watched the two.
Yeah, I did too, actually.
There we go.
Good thing I was here.
Anybody else? Linda?
I just wanted to verify the vote.
I'm sorry?
What was the vote, please?
Who seconded it? Who seconded that? Linda DeGray, Commissioner DeGray?
And Walter. Sorry, Ken.
Walter's not here. This would be Terrence.
Terrence.
So, are you set, Lori? You good?
Yeah, I just want, again, we still don't have a recording session.
Okay, so show of hands to accept the minutes as is from that date, March 24th. March 14th. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Town Attorney's Report dated March 26, 2024. So what we have in front of us is a recap of ongoing litigation. A lot of this is, some of this has been here the five years that I've been here. So the justice system sometimes moves a little slowly, but, you know, if you have any questions on this, we could go through staff, but it's pretty self-explanatory. Would anybody like to, anybody like to comment, or anybody have anything they want to say? Again, it's all litigation. We really can't get into particulars or specifics about it.
Move to accept the report.
Second, please, is a motion on the floor. Second by Commissioner Holinsky. Raise a hand, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Approved. Okay. Do I see Rich here? No. Zoning enforcement officer?
No.
He's not here. We have a report, I think that's coming later. Is a letter from him that's coming up later in the process here?
Yeah.
But he's not, he's not going to be here to guide us along.
Yeah.
And Lori, can you be guiding us through that letter that has to do with our upcoming public hearing here? There's a letter attached from him. There's a violation attached.
I'm confused what you're talking about.
Well, we have a public hearing coming up. New business, I'm sorry, SPR 1931, which in that, there's an attachment from him. There's an order.
Right, and this is in response to the order.
Okay. We don't need him here to...
As my report reflects.
Okay. Authorization of administrative approvals.
We haven't done any at this time.
Thank you.
Do you want to do, ask for public participation?
Oh, yeah. Did I do that again?
Seven.
I'm sorry, jumping all over the place here. Public participation, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to the Commission? Anything that's not on the agenda tonight is acceptable, so if you'd like to come up and speak, this would be the time. I don't see anybody here, and we'll move on. Bond releases. Do we have any bond releases?
No.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Lori, you already did the administrative approval, now you're Director of Planning Report.
Okay, I do have a couple items that might take a little time. Do you want to...
All the time you need.
You want to discuss that before the application is heard? Or do you want it?
Well, go right ahead. Lori, is yours?
Okey-dokey. So I did want to say that we are still entertaining a possible candidate for the replacement of Matt Davis, so that is still in the works. And what I did want to discuss is the text amendment that we just approved, there seems to be some concern over the adding of the two spaces for each two-bedroom unit. So I don't have any direct response from anybody, I've just heard that this has become some, a topic of conversation out there, so I just wanted to pass this out. Here, if you can just pass one, pass it on. So this again is the elderly housing within the HR 33 zone, and so quite honestly, we don't need to have parking spaces or parking requirements in any of our regulations because we have an entire section for parking. The Commission has the right to modify parking, and we are now falling under Public Act 2129. So the reason I added the two spaces as a recommendation is because I wanted it to be clear that if there was one space, one bedroom, you'd have one space, two bedrooms, you'd have two spaces. So it just made it clearer, and again, we have to look at things across the board in a zone itself. So if you do a text amendment per zone, you have to look at all the different properties that may utilize that new text amendment, so it's not site-specific. So because this has become, I don't know, as I say, an item of conversation out there, I spoke with Chris Bronson, and he said that yes, if the Commission so desired, we could sponsor an application to remove this. So I've got a couple, three suggestions. We could remove the parking requirement altogether, because quite honestly, parking requirements are in the parking section of the zoning regulations. We could remove the two-bedroom parking requirement, or if you so desire, you can require that only one-bedroom or studio apartments are permitted in, within this use. Or you could do nothing, and quite honestly, if you do nothing, nothing changes. It's still going to be those requirements. The only thing if you did change, if you did desire to just only have one-bedroom apartments, that would be a change, because you just never have a two-bedroom apartment in any other location, should they desire to go, to utilize this. So I don't know what your thoughts might be. This just came to my attention this morning, so I just wanted to kind of bring it to light and see if you'd like to fix anything or not.
Any questions for Lori? We'll start with Commissioner DeGray.
I think we leave it. There are times, I've had this experience where I should have had two bedrooms, one because my mom had dementia, and I had to have 24/7 care for her, and one of the requirements was that they have a room or a bed for the aide. So also, I had two elderly aunt and uncle, they slept in separate bedrooms because of medical conditions and didn't want to wake each other up, so to say no two bedrooms is wrong. They were still able to get about, and they both had a car, so two bedrooms, two spaces makes sense. It's not always one car for two bedrooms, so I figure leave it alone. We're talking not just one specific area, we're talking the whole HR 33.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. You had your hand up? Commissioner Gray, I'm sorry.
Lori, in your opinion, I'm either...
I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Yeah. I'm just confused a little bit. Remove the parking requirements altogether, or remove the two-bedroom parking requirements? Which one gives the more parking? I'd rather...
It doesn't. It doesn't change. So if you have two one-bedroom apartments, you could have two spaces. If you have one two-bedroom apartment, you're going to have two spaces.
Okay, so that doesn't change...
So essentially, it's one space per one bedroom.
Well, I just didn't want to take away any more parking than it already has.
This development, even though it's not necessarily part of the text amendment, the proposed development, based on their financing, will only have one-bedroom apartments, but what I was leaving this open for is that there may be other options within the HR 33, so that's, that's the only reason I did this.
Okay.
[laughing].
I'm not against any, I'm not against anything, I'm not against the two bedrooms, and I'm not against the parking, so me, myself, could either, whatever the rest, we decide, the rest of you guys decide, I'm okay with it either way.
I'm going to go down this end for a second. Anybody down this end?
Just Terry.
Nope, good. D. Antonio?
All right. I don't mean to jump in. So I am in full, I am in full agreement about a hard no on number three, full agreement with Commissioner DeGray. I do not think we should limit the bedrooms within units. To be honest, I'm surprised, I'm taking your word for it, I'm surprised we can even do that legally, but, but even if we have the jurisdiction to do so, I would like to keep the options open, would not, would not want to limit developments to one-studio bedrooms. And we're talking, again, specifically elderly. As far as, as far as the suggestions, number one is kind of what I was getting to at the last meeting, which is when I mentioned about kind of adding complexity to our regulations and adding in regulations that are already elsewhere in the regulations. So I personally, I am in favor of number one. As Lori explained, we already have parking table with all the parking regulations nicely consolidated by use in Section 10 of our regulations. I think it just adds confusion and jumping around, and does not help our regulations for, for understandability for putting parking regulations across multiple sections, so that's why I say number one.
Thank you, Commissioner D. Antonio. Go ahead.
Yeah, I personally think we ought to just leave it alone. We passed this with all good intentions. We explained to the people that were here why we left it in there, and I just don't think we need to make any moves to change it, because we're going to have it in the site plan. If there's any changes you got to make, make it in the site plan. The parking regulation is there. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner DeGray and Commissioner Lynch, or Vice Chairman Lynch. Yeah, I think we should keep it in there, we should leave it alone. We had a full discussion at the last meeting, and everyone agreed that a good way to do it is the fact that with the two bedrooms, you are able to have separate bedrooms for elderly people, and that happens a lot, you know, and so, so I think, I think it's fine the way it is. We had the discussion, the vote was seven to zero, if I recall, and so I don't think we have any need to change it at this point.
Thank you. Any others? Good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I say yes, also, leave it be, and I think we're doing update to zoning regulations anyway, right, so we can take care of the parking at that time. Leave it be for now, it was approved, it was unanimous last week, and, you know, let it run. I'm certainly a hard no on number three as well. I mean, absolutely, you know, I think two bedrooms, as Commissioner DeGray echoed, that needs to be there, so, obviously, so that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Petronella. Is there anybody else, any other member? Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify quick. I think it's kind of been implied, but, and it's, it's fine if we leave it as is, so I'm not, don't worry, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue anything, but just to clarify, if the two parking spaces per two-bedroom was omitted, that's got nothing to do with how many bedrooms are permitted. So I know last meeting, there was a lot of conflation of these two things, so our regulations do not specify the number of bedrooms, so whether or not we specify the number of parking spaces per bedroom is neither permissive nor dismissive of how many bedrooms can be allowed. So I just think there's, there's a lot of confusion around that, so, you know, it's fine as is, but, you know, just going forward, just, you know, if, if our regulations say that, you know, two parking spaces are required for two bedrooms, that's not saying you have to have two bedrooms, it's not saying two bedrooms are allowed, you know, are allowed. If it's not in our regulations and it's not illegal, it's allowed, so, you know, let's all just kind of remember that.
Please.
I just have a question. It's a maximum, correct, of two parking spaces, so if we're reviewing the site plan, and we need to limit that to like 1.7, let's just say we can, correct?
You're asking if we can make it less?
Yeah, just, we're saying a maximum of two, could we make that less in the site plan, and I'm just asking the question, if we needed to.
You have the ability to modify the parking regulations if, if the applicant convinces the Commission that it's a good thing.
Okay, yeah, that was interesting. Thanks, Lori.
So this wasn't on the agenda tonight, so I don't think we could act on it tonight?
It's just a discussion.
The discussion, right. So with staff and professional suggestions, comments, you know, and since I've been sitting up here, it's kind of my steering point towards helping with the decision-making, whether it's you, fire, public safety, police, engineering, so I think that, you know, kind of drove us, because, you know, we're laypeople, you're the professionals, so, and to support your, your suggestions, I think that's kind of, you know, what we did, and I think that's the way to do it, because, you know, we ask always for staff help and professional help. So to do this, it would going to require, for it to come back to the agenda, to even move any further, even, or even I think...
Right, so it's...
To vote on, to even to leave it alone, I don't know if that's an appropriate vote tonight, to, it's not on the agenda, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I guess to err on the side of caution, we could take a vote officially at the next meeting, but usually, like, if, if we were going to propose a text amendment at any time, we would come to the Commission and say, would you like to do this? And that gives staff the, the direction as to, should we make out an application to do X, Y, and Z, or should we not?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we did that similarly with, oh my goodness, what was the application with the last board? But, I'm sorry, I can't remember right, right now, but this is how staff finds out what direction the Council or Commission wants us to go in.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we, for the next meeting, you can prepare it in, in the format where we could actually look at it and vote eight, one, two, or three officially? Again, not that, being that it's not warned or on the agenda, I think...
That's fine.
That may be a better way to approach it.
Okay.
And does anybody have any comment relative to that? Please.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting too involved in the weeds. The message came here that there was some discussion from outside of this room, from outside of what we're doing, that there was some concern about the parking. We said, all of us, I think, said, we discussed it at the last meeting, we approved it at the last meeting, the only reason I would see to even put it on an agenda, and this is just my own feeling, I'm not a lawyer, but instead of why we need to put it on the agenda is beyond me, because we approved what's there officially, we gave it to the applicant, we said, okay, you got the approval, go ahead and do your site plan and all that, and why we would even bring it up again, other than there's been a discussion, and if somebody might have had a change of mind, maybe then we might want to bring it up, but it doesn't appear that way, so I don't understand why we need to put it on the agenda at all, because I think we're getting more into the weeds than we need to get into.
Thank you, and I, thank you, and I appreciate that. The fact that it wasn't in our packet, it came to us tonight...
As a discussion issue.
As a discussion issue. But to take action, to take action on something that's not warned, I'm not a lawyer either, so I just want to, you know, err on the side of caution, everybody can digest this, prepare it in a format other than, I think, you know, you gave us kind of like bullet points, and I appreciate, you know, the information that you had to do at the last minute, but I don't know if it's best to just talk, you know, we're talking about it tonight and move it to next, next meeting and go from there. Commissioner DeGray, please.
Just one question. Has this already gone to CROG?
It doesn't need to, because it's not within...
This doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was going to say, would that hold it up, being approved through CROG, because that takes a month, and...
Yeah, it only goes to CROG if it's within 500 feet of the municipal boundaries, and this is not.
Okay, thanks.
So with that, can I get a consensus, just show of hands that we...
Mr. Commissioner, just one more question.
Sure.
So are you asking the Commission to whether we're going to change our decision on the vote that was taken at the last meeting in regards to this, because it sounds to me like everybody's in agreement that we leave it as is, correct?
Correct. So what, what I'm asking is, because of, there was some concern or maybe confusion, would the Commission want to entertain a new text amendment sponsored by the town to take the parking out or not?
Okay.
But that would come in a form of actual application for the town event field, right, and I think that's, you know, if we're going to do it, whether we, whether we say, whether we vote in favor or against...
Yeah.
Everybody keep, but that's the way it should come. It should come properly before us, not just like this. That's my, my feeling.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree, if we're going to do anything, but it sounded like to me, at least in this conversation, that nobody really wanted to do anything, so therefore we don't have to do anything, so therefore why go through an application process?
So when the town applies officially, it's going to be a town application, correct?
There wouldn't be any application, under what I'm saying, there would not be an application. We'd be done with this issue tonight.
Based on the, on the, on the vote, one, two, three, four, five people voted against doing anything. So they wanted to just do nothing, keep it as is. So at this point, I would, as staff, not pursue starting an application, but if you want to have this as some official vote that's on the agenda, we could do that.
I think it, I think it should be.
I don't think it's necessary, but that's, to be on the safe side, why not?
I think that'd probably be the proper way of addressing it, you know, it'll all be neat and clean with a bowtie on it, or, either way it goes, whatever way everybody in the main could state it, but let's do it like that, because this wasn't even in our packet, I didn't even know this was coming tonight.
I was working on it until I quit today.
And that was in our packet last meeting.
Yes.
That was the packet, that's what we voted on.
Right.
And so we're done.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm really having trouble wrapping my head around it.
So moved.
Because we've, we've completed the issue, it's done.
Okay.
You know, if for some reason in the future, it comes back somehow, for some reason, if it comes back during our, we're scheduled, as Commissioner Petronella said, we're scheduled to review our, our regulations anyway, maybe at that time, we may want to do something, but, I mean, this is a done deal, I don't see why we need to go back, especially, it wasn't even a close vote.
Mr. Commissioner, is it, is it right to, for us to take like a show of hands in this meeting for that, or not?
I was looking for a show of consensus just to handle it next meeting. Just, we have time to think about it.
I don't necessarily think that you need to do that, but you may certainly, you are the chairman, so...
That's just, I'm only one vote, I'm only one person, I am the chairman, but, you know, just to kind of keep things rolling, but I want everybody's input, I just think that we weren't going to be talking about this tonight in specific, specifically.
I just wanted to agree that, you know, we had a special meeting to come to this conclusion, and we all voted on it. Doesn't seem to be a major question about anything, it was a suggestion, they were looking for some just discussion. We had the discussion, everybody says leave it alone, let's move on.
So maybe Lori can reiterate the way you brought it up, there's some discussion. You said, you brought it to us tonight because of the town manager speaking to you, and maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit.
All the, the conversation was that he heard that there were some people that were very upset over it, over adding the two spaces for two two-bedrooms, and as I said, I, and I explained to him, it was a staff suggestion, PCC reviewed it, discussed it, and voted on it, and the only reason it was in there is just to clarify that if there's two bedrooms, it would be two spaces per two bedrooms, and that follows Public Act 2129. So that's the only thing that I heard from him, he just said, yeah, there was some, I just heard some concerns over it. So...
Okay, so there'll be, so there'll be no, so there'll be no voting, and we're just going to move on to the next item?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that how we're going to handle this? Okay. Everybody good with that? No vote, no discussion?
Yep.
Okay, so next we have outside correspondence. Any outside correspondents looking across the table here? I have one outside correspondent, had a conversation with Town Attorney Tom Tyler. He has suggested an executive session with us prior to our next regular meeting. Agenda topics are as follows: pending or threatening litigation, pending and/or threatening litigation, and personnel matters. Start time's going to be 6:45. Lori, I'd appreciate if you can, you can secure a room for us to hold this executive session in.
It's going to start at 6:45?
I'm sorry, 6:15.
6:15.
Sorry, 6:15. I wrote wrong.
Pending and/or threatening litigation.
6:15, and if you could secure a room, if you can, I know the rooms are hard to come by, that we can hold the executive session, and please post the agenda with the required statutory requirements. So that'll be next, before next meeting. Executive session.
On pending and/or threatening litigation.
Topics are pending and/or threatening litigation and personnel matters.
Okay. Perfect. Let's see what we could do.
So we get that on the agenda and get that out properly, town clerk or whatever your normal procedures are. Anything else on Commissioners, outside, outside correspondence, anything?
Calendar.
Commissioner Correspondence.
July 25th, 4/25.
So Lori, I just had one thing, I know we talked about it, I just want to get an update on Mr. Poland's schedule, have you reached out to him?
Aye.
I know you said the funds are in place, so I want to start scheduling some, some meetings, and I think the way to move forward with it is to have special meetings, and we'll have public participation after we've reached a consensus. public participation after we've reached a consensus. Because if we have public participation at each meeting while we go over the regulations, I think it'll take a long time because everybody will want to talk about each regulation. So, and again, I, you know, I want, I, I'd like to do it in sections, too, I think, to make it a little easier. We could talk about Mr. Pol, with Mr. Poland about that. But again, have you reached out to him?
I have not had an opportunity to.
Okay, could you, could you do that and let me know?
Absolutely.
And I think we've talked at our, at our first meeting, everybody was willing to have special meetings to do this. And, you know, I don't want to keep, I'm not saying I don't want the public to speak about it, but I don't know if we'd be able to get our work done if we have a conversation with 10 people on every regulation, every section or stat or paragraph.
Right.
So let's get it done and, you know, agree on, on what we're going to, and then present it to the public for, for public comment. How's that sound to everybody?
The only thing I'd offer a suggestion on is because you are going to want to hear from the public originally and rather do it all at once, that as we do a section...
Yes, that's exactly.
And we say, okay, here's what we want to change, here's what we want to do, put it out there, and then say, okay, the next special meeting will be a public hearing just on that section.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yep, and we can get them done bang, one at a time.
That's correct.
And I can discuss with Mr. Poland further on that. But we need to start getting that going. You know, time just all of a sudden goes by like that. We have, who knows what we're going to get for applications. Summertime is coming. Few people that sit very close to me love golfing. And so we don't want to interrupt that.
Some people, while you were on vacation, would like to have been in Florida.
We could remote in from Florida, actually. But thank you, Commissioners, for, for that. So yeah, I think it's important that we do that. 13, continued public hearings. We don't have any public hearings. And new public hearings, there is no new public hearings. And old business. Anybody have any old business? Old business? New business? Okay, no new business. So, Mr. Secretary.
Yeah.
Please.
New business, SPR number 1931, 504 Hazard Avenue, application for special use permit for alterations to site for outdoor patio. Michael McManus, applicant, 504 Hazard Avenue, LLC owner, map 101, lot 216, I-1 zone.
Are the applicants here?
Yes.
Evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mike McManus, 504 Hazard Avenue, Enfield.
Alan Cosberg, attorney for Powder Hollow in West Hartford, Connecticut.
So 504 Hazard Avenue, sir, is your business address?
That's correct.
504 Hazard Avenue, I believe, is also the owner, the name of the owner.
Okay.
They're not here.
Okay.
I understand that the report, the staff report for the application had two questions of import. One was the, whether or not there was manufacturing going on at the location consistent with the licenses that had been issued. We can offer, Mike can testify as to that. The second issue, which involves the amount of parking at the location, and I understand that it's this commission's, within this commission's purview, to determine what exactly, what parking is necessary and appropriate. I would like to mention that Mike is a tenant. It's the landlord's, it's potentially the landlord's issue as to how much parking is needed to suit the uses for which he intends to use the building. The building that Mike operates out of is one of eight buildings in the entire complex. The landlord, in this specific case, has overtly and in writing given his permission to Mike and to use the, and to expand the patio. That is in part of the record here, I believe. In addition, the landlord has not shown up here or at any of the hearings, actually, to contest any of the things that have been going on. So in terms of the existing use, I understand that the building is largely vacant and has been, and Mike has been operating at the location for at least 10 years or so. And there has been no distress in terms of the usage of the parking. It's been more than adequate. In fact, there's tremendous amount of excess parking. So for those reasons, I ask the chairman and the distinguished members of this committee to consider taking notice of the fact that there is sufficient parking there. And if, if not that, then at least grant us an extension to provide supplemental information to bear that out. And perhaps give us some direction as to what the appropriate standards might be for this particular property.
Do you have anything to add?
No, Alan said that very well. We are still manufacturing on site. We have a wine cider mead permit. We have a beer permit. We still have our original brewing system in place. Everything has just been shifted to a different location in the exact same building. So we still have our original brewing system for test batching, and we have all of our wine making equipment.
Okay, thank you. Lori, do you have anything you can add to this and some input, please?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just curious, so if we were to go to visit your site tomorrow, what would we see in, as far as the manufacturing?
We have a, it's called a Blickman Brewing System.
Into the microphone, please.
It's called a Blickman Brewing System, and it's the exact same one that we had when we first opened.
It's in the basement.
It's in the basement, correct.
Okay.
We moved it from the first floor to the basement because we are no longer doing massive production in there. We only do our test batching in there.
So are you manufacturing the beer and wine that is sold to your customers in that location?
The test batches, yes.
So the test batches are sold?
Allows us, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Test batches are sold to the public. We do large batches at larger scale. The tanks wouldn't even fit in the building. So test batches are still viable beer, and it is all sold to the public.
Okay, and the same with wine?
Exactly.
Okay. So we just needed to verify that because it had, your, your floor plan had changed drastically.
Okay.
And originally, all of the brewery...
The big tanks, yeah.
The tanks and stuff were upstairs so everybody could see them, and that was part of your floor area. And then the wine came in, and I believe that was also the case. So all of a sudden, all of this has been brought down to the basement, and everything become, has now become floor area for patrons and, you know, the taproom. So if you were to just look at that, it looks like a bar.
Okay.
And, and the reason that that's an issue is that in the industrial zones, we don't allow bars. That's why you were able to go in as a brew pub or a winemaker because you were manufacturing and selling your goods just as a tasting room, not a full-fledged bar. So that, that's why there was some concern with that. So the other thing is, is that we do have a concern because you have changed your floor plan, and now your, your occupancy rate is now from 48 to 79, and that doesn't even include the outside dining. So that's why we're concerned about the parking because you've, you know, not quite doubled the room for the patrons. So we needed, we, we would like some, some knowledge that there is adequate parking for your use and all the other uses, even if it's vacant. I mean, there are, there are definitely some other uses in the, some of the buildings, but we don't know what they are either.
Yeah, can I also add that the taproom, I'm sorry, the taproom operates from late in the afternoon till mid-evening?
Nine, yeah.
Eight, nine o'clock, nine or 10?
Nine during the week, 10 on the weekend.
And, you know, those are not hours that any business that might potentially go in there is likely to need the parking. Right now, there is excess parking. If you drove by it now or during the day, you'd find excess parking. But the fact is that the uses, while not perfectly separated, only have a small degree of overlap, and largely, the times that, that Powder Hollow taproom would need parking coincide with times when the building is unlikely to be used or fully used.
Mr. Chair?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please, Mr. President.
Yeah, with, with respect to the parking, the, the property has so much industrial space, which requires so much parking per, whatever the requirements are. But I think, I think a global plan needs to be put together that identifies the whole property, meaning you've got so many square feet of industrial. So that potential parking requirement may be so much. Your use will require at, at so many seating, based upon seating, will require so many parking spaces. But a whole global plan needs to be put together so that we know that there's adequate parking. Another, other industries can go in there, and then all of a sudden, you think you're fine, you're going to prove to us that, oh, there's plenty there. But if another business goes in, they're going to be squashed for parking, and it's going to be a problem. And then everybody's going to be coming back to us, and we're going to have to deal with it again. But, you know, the whole property needs to be identified, what, what the parking requirements are. I know years ago, there was a parking lot added on out in the front. I'm familiar with the property, but there is a lot of space there that potentially, if it's full, requires X amount of spaces. And you're going to carve out yours, but what leaves it for the rest of them so that, you know, and all due respect for the land, for the landlord, it's in his best interest to do that and to work with you to come up with that calculation.
I'm certainly not opposed to that, but I think, just a bit of history, the, the present owner of the building inherited Mike as a tenant. There was a prior landlord who approved Mike and the expansion of the property to include the patio. When the issues came up again, the new landlord also approved Mike and in writing. We have, that was part of the record that we submitted, that the, the current owner approved the parking. I don't know quite how to advise my client how to come up with a parking plan for the entire property because we have no sense of, you know, we know now that it's vacant just because we see that, but we have no idea who is, who or what is going to be going in there in the future, and I don't know that we can plan for that. I think that's sort of up to the landlord to, to, if he's approved us and he hasn't frankly come in and, and voiced any objection to the parking or the patio, I'm not quite sure how I can advise my client to go forward and come up with a plan for the entire property.
Well, what, what your landlord did is, is he created a hardship that's going to come back to bite him because by him allowing you and giving you a letter or permission to park and utilize all of that, that's fine. In the future, if he comes in or another tenant comes in to utilize the space, and then they say, I got to use this parking space, and then we're going to look at that and say, you know, we're going to deny it because your, your client is utilizing up too much space. And then he's going to be in this, and he's going to try to take back something from you in order to lease some more space, but it's, it's just going to be a problem down the future. Otherwise, he's, he's kind of limiting his ability to lease all the space if he's going to, if he's allocated so many spaces to you. So, because he's, he's taking that away from the rest of the property. That's why I say globally, it's, it's a problem that he's created, and he's putting it on you and any future tenants. That's the way I look at it.
Relatively speaking, I think Powder Hollow takes up 2,700 feet, including the patio of space. And this property, depending on if you're looking at gross area or gross leasable area, is probably 50,000 square feet. So Mike's a relatively small user. There is a tremendous amount of excess parking, both across the street, as one person had pointed, I think it might have been you, actually, across the street, along Hazard Avenue, and in between the building from where Mike is and the adjacent complex as well. So there is, there, I understand the concern. I'm not sure that it's necessarily Mike's concern, but I understand the point that you're trying to make. There is a tremendous amount of excess parking there now. The building is wildly under, you know, it's vacant for the most part. There are a few cars there during the day, but not many. And more, most importantly, I think, is that Mike's use is offset against when a normal operator of the adjacent buildings would likely be in the property.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I don't know that there's likely to be people in the taproom at 3 o'clock on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, and after hours, they'll likely be elsewhere. And Mike, there will be room for Powder Hollow's patrons.
Yeah, I, I just feel that an overall parking plan should be submitted. There's, there's, the parking requirements are in the zoning regulations. There, where, you know, some, something can be presented for allocation, and if you need, whatever you need, you can allocate it, you can show it on a plan and say, okay, now there's 100 spaces left over for other uses, and then that can be, that's divided out. This is how it works. So many square feet of this equals so many parking spaces and so forth. And if there's any offsets between nights or this, because right now, there's, there's no restriction on the property. You're, you're saying that it's industrial space and that nobody will be working there at nights. You don't know that. You know, industrial uses, some of them are, you know, three shifts. But you don't really know that. And I know that the building's been long, been vacant, most, most of the building's been long, been vacant for, for many years. But just, I don't think this commission should be put in a bind because if the owner comes in with an application a year from now and says, I got a new tenant, they're going to lease 10,000 square feet, they need 200 spaces, and then, and it's not there because they've committed it to you. It's going to be problematic. And I just think that it should be straightened out, or something should be, there should be an allocation dedicated right now, and it should be based upon the zoning regulations, what the requirements dictate for, for your certain need in an overall plan. I, you know, I, I'm not going to say it's your problem. I think it's, it's a problem with the landlord and yourselves to come up with, with a solution and a plan to present to us.
Mr. Commissioner. I'll set, Mr. Petronella.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I would definitely agree with what you said. I think what we're, maybe we're not asking for a global plan of the entire property, right? But I think what we would like to see, and correct me if, if you think I'm wrong, is based on your capacity, you know, a set number of spots that you would be allocated or need for your capacity at its highest level. So that in the future, something like what this commissioner just alluded to, you know, we don't put ourselves in a bind, and, and you don't get pushed to, you know, make decisions that you're not comfortable making because, or the landlords, for that, for lack of a better term. So I think, that's, I think, what we're asking, if, if I'm understanding this correctly.
I think, really, just what we're looking for, I think the plan is, is not something that's a lot of work. I think you go count the spaces, what is, you know, what does each company use? How many spaces do they need? And we know how many spaces you need. We already have it here for your expansion. And just submit that as the plan. And I don't know if there are any other, Lori, if there are any other, you know, requirements? Do we need a plot? Do we need all that kind of stuff, you know? But it sounds like, you know, there's 50 spaces allocated to Company A, and there's 79 spaces allocated to Powder Hollow, and so on and so forth.
I think this is where we're asking for your guidance because if we go do a full out, if we hire a design professional to do a plot plan and show you all the spaces and do all the... and do all this, the majority of the building is empty. They're going to dictate it as vacancy, or they're going to dictate it as warehouse space. But that's not potentially what it's going to be used for. And it's going to come up with, the new regulations will show maybe the entire property for a 50,000-square-foot warehouse, whether I was there or not, there's not enough parking. But right now, we have a landlord situation where he's saying, "We have over 120, 140 spots just on the upper level, and there's more than enough for the maximum that I'm ever having, let alone what the math says we need 87." We don't typically ever see 87 spaces used. We see the back parking lot getting used, and on high traffic, maybe half of the upper parking lot getting used on a Saturday afternoon. But if we hire a design professional, besides the financial burden, which I understand is not your need to worry about, it's not going to show that a perfect split between all of these spots, because it's massive amounts of warehouse and office that are not being used and are going to dictate parking spaces. So I don't think the plan is going to show you some magic number that says, "This is a great mix, so let's give the brewery 78 spots," or whatever this number is. It's going to have to be dictated that these are live numbers. When a tenant comes in and the landlord dictates, you get three spaces. That's what the landlord dictates. As long as there's three spaces, it's not going to be a perfect spot. STR just continuously added to that warehouse and eventually added a new parking lot. It's not going to be exactly the way the new code says, where a 50,000-square-foot warehouse needs X number of spots, and it's magically there. And I don't want to set you guys up for that. Like, we're trying to show you that the landlord has granted us all the space we need, and he was fully aware of anybody he comes in, what he wants to allocate on the property, without having to make massive renovations, because that site has dirty soil, they can't make renovations.
It's also my understanding.
I think the problem is that we don't have any documentation that shows the numbers. I think that's the basic problem.
I believe the original application for when we moved in, correct me if I'm wrong, it shows over 125 spots, and the Google image still shows all that. So I thought that was on the original application that it shows. But, I mean, if that's what we're looking for, I'm happy to provide that. I'm just looking for some potential leeway that we don't need to hire a design professional.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be some document that we can officially accept. And I'm not sure of all the requirements that staff would need for that, okay? But seems to me you could, you could get away with a, you know, not a whole big dog and pony show here. You could just get away with, you know, an allocation that says, "Here's what it is. As of now, these are vacant, not needed," so on and so forth.
There are also portions of the parking that are across the street and along Hazard Avenue, and then, of course, between the buildings. I don't know whether or not we've had a site plan engineer show you an empty parking lot with striped spaces across the street. I'm happy to go out and have him count it, if that's helpful to you. I'm hoping there could be some dispensation to actually have to have a site engineer go draw a parking lot across the street for spaces that, you know, are not often part of our use.
It sounds like we should look to see if we can work something out.
I'm, I'm okay, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Grillo, I think, was next.
The parking lot across the street belongs to somebody else. It doesn't belong to that company, that property owner. It's a private property.
I think he's referencing Water Street, so it is the same property.
Okay, all right, because I'm thinking Hazard Ave. You freaked me right out, so, whoa.
Sorry for my mistake.
No, I'm like, whoa, I know the people who own that. That's like, no, that's not happening. Yeah, so, because I'm thinking where you're facing Hazard, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse the issue.
Just through the chairman to stop.
Please, gentlemen.
I'm sorry, sorry.
When Rick went out, and he made his report and his cease and desist, did he ask to see where there were manufacturing any of this beer and wine? Or was he not allowed to see? I guess my question is.
He went into the basement, he took pictures. The only thing that we saw down there that, and I don't know what is what, I know that there are pictures of large glass jugs. I'm guessing that has something to do with the wine making, and I think there was some sort of metal apparatus.
Stainless steel, blickman.
Okay, so they were down there.
Okay.
But they were not operational, but that doesn't mean that they don't use it, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'll speak for Mike, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Mike would never have said to Rick, "You can't go downstairs," or "You can't..." Whatever access Rick Rochelli wanted, I'm sure it was granted.
I'm sure it was, but I was just wondering if he had asked, and maybe Mike wasn't there, some employee was there and said, "No," because that's my job, so, okay, thank you.
I'll decide, Commissioner DeGray? Good. Commissioner Lynch.
Yeah. How many test batches do you do in a week? I mean, is this a once-in-a-greatwhile, because now you're producing your beer at your production facility, and that's what's going to all the package stores or wherever else you're selling it?
So the wine, we only have one location with a license to make the wine.
Okay.
Every drop of wine is manufactured with that license.
Okay.
The beer, we do test batches, it changes throughout the season. In our busier season, we'll do a test batch maybe two times a month, and production runs at the other locations. In the off-season, we like to do more experimenting, because we have more free staff, and it could be once a week. It really depends on how many open tap lines we have, how much time we have. It changes quite a bit. But all of the wine has to be manufactured there. It's our only license for wine.
All right, well, what I'm seeing, first of all, I'm new on this commission this year, so I haven't been involved in any of the past. It seems to me that every time, from what I'm reading, every time you get an approval, that it's never handled completely. And every time you get an approval, a year later, you're back and saying, "Oh, can we change this?"
Excuse me.
I want to know, what are we doing? Because this is, I don't know, fourth or fifth time, from what I'm reading, that you've been here.
I'd be happy to clear that up.
For the same, for the same property, for the same everything. At least, that's what you're telling me.
So roughly 10 years ago, we came for approval to open the brewery. Roughly six years ago, seven years ago, we asked to open a winery. When COVID hit, we asked to open a patio, and it was a major rush to open the patio. And everybody was gracious enough to allow me to use a Sharpie and draw, "This is where we want to build the patio." The paperwork did not fly afterwards, and we had to come back and say, "With some drawings, this is how we built the patio." I did not finish through on the paperwork, and I said that the last time with the zoning violation, I lost out on the paperwork. It's my fault, I owned up to that. We are here because I did not finish paperwork after everything was totally built. And now we are here trying to finish the paperwork. The patio has not been touched since we built it directly when COVID said, "We can reopen," and nobody would sit in the building. Nothing else has been changed. We have not done construction on that building since the patio was put. Winery was built roughly six years ago, whatever the dates are on that, nothing about the winery has been changed in six years.
Okay, for now, thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner, did you want? Who wants to go? You guys. Commissioner Grillo, you've been waiting patiently, please.
That's okay. Okay, so, I actually was on a committee, and we were, I thought we were really good too. We gave you the patio, and at that time, we saw your nice drawing and stuff, but it was all good. We were trying to be helpful, which I know we did. But now, COVID's over, and everybody else that does a plan like this has a drawing for us of some sort. We're not just picking on you. Please don't, don't take it the wrong way. We have nothing. I was here, even my paperwork from when you first started, I have. I don't have, I don't know if Commissioner Petronella has any of that drawings for parking spots. I know he was also one of the commissioners here. Mrs. DeGray was also one of the commissioners. So I don't think we're asking too much to get us that, if you're so confident, first of all, yeah, if you're confident about it, I know the spacing you have. We all get it, we know the area. But you got to do what everybody else does. We have to have that, we have to make sure so we, as members, are covered. Because you don't want to put the blame on your landlord, you don't want to put, excuse me, the blame on you. Don't put it on us, because we don't want that either, okay? I feel Mr. Petronella is absolutely correct. We need that paperwork to move, period. Any further, the first floor, the tile needs to straighten out, what's going on with the first floor. I think our drawings of the whole setup now complete should be done. I was against it last time, because I didn't feel that he needed to do it. Like I said, we were trying to help you out. You have been here a few times now, and we've never asked you for it, but we have to. We have to have this. Now, it's a mess, and my, it's a mess. We have nothing, it's all, it's all over the place. And I think it'll be easy for you to do, just, you're right, it's going to cost a couple bucks, and I'm sorry, but.
If I can, we have submitted full drawings now, everything except for the parking plan. Everything has been done by a design professional, a registered architect, everything has been submitted. All of it is sitting with the building department, and we are trying to get everything exactly the way they're asking for it. The patio has created now a bathroom issue, where they want more bathrooms in the building, and that has gone down to the state, asking for a modification, because it's going to take up half the space in the tap room, to now say, "We need three ADA bathrooms in a building." It is going through process, we've hired design professionals, all professional paperwork has been submitted.
So what I don't understand is, you hired all these professionals to do this. What was it to add the parking to it?
None of them thought that was necessary. Nobody thought the parking was necessary.
That's kind of key to every single one of us, that's key.
I hired a site engineer to come out and do the whole slope, because everybody asked us to make sure that slope was stable.
Mm-hmm.
We hired them to do all of that. They checked everything, we did the whole interior, we did the exterior, the patio, everything. Nobody ever said, "Let's look at..." None of the design professionals ever said, "Let's look at parking," because they just saw huge parking lots with massive vacant, empty buildings next to us. It never came up that we should do this, until it was on here, and we just didn't, no, we didn't do that.
And I, once again, I understand that, but I could show you hundreds, thousands of applications that everyone has parking. Why they didn't turn that, because of how big it is, right? I think back at that time, you were the only one in there. I think you were the only ones in there. So who would think of 130 spots for one person? But now, I, we have to have it. It's, there's, that's just my opinion, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. Lori, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, during COVID-19, you were allowed to create outside seating, and we couldn't consider parking. That was part of the requirements from the governors, I forget what they call them. So we couldn't look at parking. So now that we've done all this, and you've met your requirements for the modifications and stuff, now we've, we realize that you've done these internal changes. You've changed your occupancy from 48 to 79. When you first got approved by your landlord, you had 48 people there. Now you have 79 theoretically, plus people outside. The way the planning and zoning regulations work is that the applicant has to prove that they have, that there is adequate parking for all uses on-site. So if there's a warehouse that's 5,000 square feet, that's going to have a specific number of parking spaces required, whether it's vacant or not. So we have to plan ahead, thinking, and hopefully thinking, that all of these spaces are going to be full. Now, with that said, I don't believe that you really need to have a parking survey done. I think it would be very helpful if you could go onto the GIS, pull up, pull up the aerial photograph, show where all the spaces are, how many spaces there are in each parking lot, and come up with a square footage, and the owner should have this, the square footage of all the vacant spaces, of all the spaces, and do the calculation for the parking for that and for yourself. So it, I'm not asking you, and, you know, this is the commission's decision, but I think that that would, the parking is there, so we just need to know where it is. Take an aerial photograph, and the GIS may not be up to date, so you might want to go to Bing or something like that, and show us where all the parking is, and get the square footages of all the vacant spaces, which should be shown on the assessor's cards, okay? And then, in our parking regulations, there is required parking for different uses. X number of square feet required of a certain use requires X number of parking. So I think that the reason that we're concerned now is that, because if STR continues to grow, or somebody comes in and says, "Oh, yes, we have three shifts of manufacturing co into most of this building," then there's going to be an issue of parking, and that's what we try to avoid. So I don't think that it should take a long time, I don't think it should be expensive. I mean, it's literally just kind of come up with the numbers.
How are we to, you know, we don't know the interior of the building either, how do we determine what's leasable versus what's not, which is gross floor area versus who the uses are?
That's something you'd have to work with the landlord. And even if it's at least guesstimated, I mean, it's like, you know, even if this was full buildout for, you know, all full gross leasable area, you know, and that calculation is done, assuming that every square foot of this building could be leased, and then you come up with the parking calculations, and there's still like a boatload of extra parking, then we know we're good. So.
For the 50,000-square-foot warehouse, that's going to be a challenge, I imagine, but we'll do the best we can.
This is how, I'm going to say, every municipality in the United States works. This is, it is up to the applicant to tell us, to show us that there is adequate parking for their use. So I'm willing to help you a little bit.
Okay.
You know, we could, I could, you know, show you what the uses are, and show you the assessor's cards on the GIS, because that might have some of the data that you need. But I do think that we need, we need to make sure that there is adequate parking for all of the uses out there, because those are some big buildings. And you hopefully are going to continue to succeed and grow, and that may mean that you might be looking for more parking.
Okay.
Right? So you don't want to have a place that you can't have your patrons park.
Thank you, Lori. Any more questions to the commission? Mr. Commissioner Mueller, go ahead.
My suggestion is, it sounds like we should probably table this at this point, and a suggestion, you should get your landlord involved. Sounds like he's just sitting back letting you deal with all his headaches. Then my suggestion was, he needs to get involved with this whole parking thing and be helpful, if he wants to keep you as a tenant, I would think. But it doesn't sound like we're going to be getting anywhere tonight with this, and I would make a motion that we table this till whenever.
Can you just hold, can you hold the motion to work?
So they are out of their statutory timeframe, so we would need to have the applicant request a 30-day extension, so maybe we get it till May 11th, I think is what it is.
Okay.
24th.
Mr. Commissioner Petronella.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention, based upon what your experience with your professionals and so forth, I understand all of that. What's really setting us off is, this is an expansion of an existing use. You know, you're taking a... is, this is an expansion of an existing use. You know, you're taking a floor area and increasing it, or your occupancy load, and you're almost doubling it. So it is an expansion. When you talk to your design professionals about the patio and getting that rectified and so forth, I'm not sure that you ever mentioned to them, oh, by the way, I'm, I'm expanding the use, and that sets it off. That sets off the requirement to meet the parking requirements. And that's really where we're at with this. It is a statutory requirement in the zoning regulations that you meet the parking requirements, and it's up to you to demonstrate that. I think Lori's suggestion of, you know, pulling down the aerial map on the GIS, that's fine. I'm willing to accept that. I would also suggest pulling down, you know, the town assessors' cards on the buildings just to double check what the landlord may or may not provide to you. But on that, on those cards, there should be some information on each building and the square footage, how many stories there are and so forth. So, okay, so you got that. So that gives you a start. And if you go to the parking regulations in the, in the zoning regulations, that kinda gives you the whole lay of the area of what the requirements are, what you gotta meet. I don't think it's that much of an exercise. Certainly, you know, you know, I think we're here to work with you, and if you want an extension, you know, I think that's easily done. I think we'll all be in agreement to that. So, you know, whatever we can do, I think we're all willing to work, work with you. Thank you.
Commissioner D'Antonio.
Yeah, I just want to say, we're not, we're not saying that you don't meet the parking regulations. If you, you will, right, you will, we just want the evidence. So you, you may even in fact be slightly under the parking requirements, and we do have the authority to adjust regulations as needed if, you know, the circumstance arose. So the point you brought up about shared parking and the different tenants and the hours of the tenants, that's, that is, that is important, and, and I'm glad you brought that up. But we just want, we just need the, the numbers to solidify that. And perhaps the numbers don't quite pan out, but you are confident that they meet your business needs, and you've talked to the landlord, and the landlord knows their numbers, and they're confident that, that will also meet their needs, and here's the reasons why, because of the hours of tenants, the shared parking, because of your experience with the business, which is very valuable in, in knowing how many parking spaces you actually require. So you come to us with that evidence, and we can look at that evidence and, and see. I mean, if you meet the requirements offhand, then, then you're good. You, you know, we have more than needed parking spaces. But even if you have less, then show us exactly what the numbers are, and we'll work with you to see.
Thank you.
Everybody else? Commissioner DeGray?
You've increased your indoor seating to 79. How much have you increased your outdoor seating? Because that's something we're gonna have to consider, too, because you've got people that are patrons that are sitting outside. The last drawing we got, after you made your modification to the original one, it shows that there's at least 36, I'm going 36 seats outside. I don't even know if that's correct at this time. I'm glad your business is doing well. I'm happy for you. I'm glad that that, that, you know, that's a good location. Also, if, maybe when one of the staff goes out, you can show them how you manufacture the wine. I don't know if you bottle it and distribute it to stores like you do your beer. I know wine is, you're telling, saying it's made in smaller batches and carboids, about five gallon carboids, I'm guessing. They're big.
15 gallon glass.
All right, 15. So I don't know if you're doing that. So if, maybe you could explain that when staff goes out to look at this, to make sure, that would be another thing. So if we could get a really good number of how many patrons, and I know it's only during the summer that you're gonna be outside, not tonight, but I think we need a lot more information from you because you've done this expansion, and you kinda do these things, and then you come to us and ask for forgiveness. So that's where I'm at right now.
Are you looking, just to make sure I understand, do you want the architectural number based on the patio that we've submitted to, or do you want like realistic?
Realistic.
On Friday night, how many people are there?
Not, not, no, because you've got X number. How many actual tables do you have out there? Do you have six picnic benches and maybe three round tables? We don't, do you understand what I'm saying? Because that's gonna increase your parking during the summer. And if there ever does, company comes in and they're running three shifts, that's gonna affect your parking during the summer also. So there's a lot of things that you need to, to give us so that we're comfortable. Like I said, you, you do something, then you ask for forgiveness. I just, I'm kind of, need more concrete information from you, okay?
Mike will get you the information you request. One other thing I just want to mention, because it's come up a couple of times, is the increase in occupancy from 49 to 79, or whatever the numbers are, 48 to 70, whatever. As I read the parking standards, the actual number of occupants isn't the relevant criteria. It's the patron floor area, I think.
Yeah, and the patron floor area has gotten bigger, and that's why you have more people, so therefore the parking gets bigger.
I understand that, but it, patron floor area hasn't doubled, I don't think. But we'll get you the numbers that you want, and we'll, we'll show you the information that you've requested tonight.
So I'm gonna, everybody is gone, I'm gonna take my turn. So I wasn't here in 14 and 17 when you first started out on the commission. But I was here in 21, and 23, and 24, and a series of things happened here. You came in for the patio. I know we were, we worked with you. You kind of did that without permits, I believe, and you kind of put it next to slopes, and there was a danger factor, and I think we resolved and got through all of that. And all about the parking, we need to address all that. But now you've changed the floor plan. Your, your floor plan is bigger. The occupancy is bigger. You relocated your manufacturing to a lower level, right? Is that what you're saying?
All of this was done with the wine application six years ago.
Okay, so when you did, so when you moved everything around, that was all approved? All by the building department? You pulled permits for everything?
To my understanding, everything is done. That's, that was to my.
Is it all inspected? I mean, because the reason why I'm going there, you said you global, you're doing like a global plan right now. You're working with the building department. You said you got, it's in process, right?
Correct. Everything.
So all these corrections and changes to the floor plan and moving equipment, I mean, I think you may want to address that because there was no permits pulled and no inspections done on any of that stuff. That has to take place. I mean, you've completely changed your operation, and God bless you, and I know you run a good place. I'm proud of you. I've even told you before, you guys do an excellent job. Community loves you. But back to 2014, that's when you started, right? It looks like. To now, you have completely changed everything. And sitting here in the five years I've been here, I only remember you coming in once with the patio being close to the cliff and all that, all that issue. But if you went ahead and changed, you know, floor plans, do you need bigger exits? I mean, did you get a plumber when you plumbed, plumbed all your equipment? Did you get electricians? Did the building inspector, you know, sign off on it? Lori, and did this go out to all, all the staff comments? I see fire, no response at this time. The floor plans increased. Do they need fire suppression? Do they need bigger, bigger exits? Police, health department, no response at this time. I mean, I don't know if this went out to the system so everybody can respond.
Of course it did.
It did. So if you're doing a global design with your architects, other than the comments you heard from parking, all needs to be addressed. But if you've got other stuff in there and you moved everything around, this is a whole new business. It's a whole new application. God bless you that you've been able to expand and, and increase your business and your livelihood. But if, if there's other issues here that haven't been taken care of, now's the time. You know, and like we're saying, we need to see these drawings. And again, I don't know what you did. You know, you moved your wine operation downstairs. That must have required some electricity work. That must have required, you know, plumbing. Upstairs, you moved walls probably because you don't have the brewery up there anymore. Did the building inspector inspect that? I mean, my, you know, there's definitely, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the extension. I think we, you said we can give them 30 days, but you gotta get to work. You better, you gotta be sure that all this stuff is done. Fire, health, building inspector, every change you made, every wall you moved, every piece of equipment that you hooked up, everything's gotta be on that plan. Everything. And then we put this thing to bed. You know, but I'm not comfortable now that I know you've made structural changes.
There's been no structural.
Well, you made interior changes. What could have, what could have, would affect an upper floor?
There's no interior walls that have come down. There was a chalkboard to divide the wine that I put up when we first moved in, and I took that down when we added the winery six years ago. There was no structural changes to this.
You had that big vat in there that you made the beer in, right? We used to be up on that floor, right?
On concrete.
Yeah, but that's gone now.
The, the piece of equipment that was sitting on concrete has now been removed.
Was the electrical secured and corrected and boxed up and, I mean, we don't know anything. You can't just move this stuff around without getting permits.
Okay.
So that's what I would like to see. And I, and I, and I'm happy for you, and I wish you all the more success. But you don't need this, keep coming back here and have all these headaches. It's agita, as we say. But if you have professionals working with you now, tackle everything, and Lori can help you. Go to the building department. Go to the fire department. Go to the health department. Go to everybody. Let's see a comment under staff comments. I like to see that. You went to them and they're good. The police, you went to them, they're good. All of that stuff. And then you come back, we get, get the drawings, the different issues, everybody else mentioned up here, along with what I'm saying, it's over. You know? I think that's the way to go because, you know, you were here, 2014, 17, 20, 21, 23, back 2013, 2023, 2024, cease and desist, back and, I mean, the whole, you know, the whole thing. And we've worked with you. You know we have. We were very, very nice to you, and let you continue your business. You know, COVID was here, like Lori mentioned, COVID's gone. We were under, I think, a governor's emergency order where we could operate, like, you know, we wanted you to succeed. We didn't want to put you out of business then. We don't want to put you out of business now. But you gotta understand, we're here for, you know, the, all the community and safety of everybody in the residence, and as well as you and your customers.
I understand.
So, you know, that, that's my feeling. And, you know, Lori, Lori, is it possible to give them a second extension if they need it? I like to give them all the time they need.
So statutorily, they may only have 65 days, so.
30 at a time, or?
So, so the 30 days should be ample time to get this done, and we get to you in the May meeting?
Yeah. But with the stuff I'm talking about, too. I mean, you need to get, you're gonna have to get busy.
All drawings, everything that the design professionals have done have been submitted to the building department. I don't know the date, what feels like months ago. We have been working on this since the cease and desist order came through, and it has been a lot of back and forth with the design professional and the building department, and we still have not been granted a final building permit to say, give us a final inspection to say this is done and over with. We are doing everything we can to do what you suggested, cross every T, dot every I, and be 100% done. I have no desire to make any changes to this business anymore. I want to make this completely done and just operate smooth sailing. I do not want to make any changes. All I'm trying to do is get the paperwork behind us and move on.
Right. So, and I'm glad you mentioned the cease and desist order. Lori, I was looking at the one, is it, that's in here? Is that an old one, or is there a typo on it? It says May? Or is Rick's order that's in our packet?
I believe that was the initial.
The initial one, right?
So.
I think it's dated May 2023?
Yeah, that's.
That's the one we were working on with the patio, then?
This is where all of this is.
That's where it all started.
This is where all this is coming from, is the paperwork was.
We were about the patio falling in the brook.
That was all part of it. This is all what we're trying to.
That's where it all started.
Finish. This is, we haven't made changes to this, and we're not asking for change to it.
Since the patio, you moved the wine?
No.
You moved the beer since the patio?
No, no, no.
Right. So when did your occupancy load increase?
Six years ago, when we built the winery.
And you went for the proper permitting then?
And it was never granted. Every time.
So now you're, so really you're operating in violation?
We've gotten every inspection we've ever asked for. The fire department walks through every single year. We've had building department onsite every time they come through. We've never been told to stop. We've been given a cease and desist, and we are trying to do everything we can to give you the paperwork to say, is this what you're looking for? We are only trying to finish the paperwork. We are trying to make no changes to the property whatsoever.
And it's gonna reflect what you did and what's there?
Everything, yes. Yes, that is correct.
And that's what's needed. So Lori, and Lori, she's offered to help you. Does she need, does it need an administrative review so we can get together with all the staff and agencies to let them know what they're looking for before he goes ahead and spends money on stuff he doesn't need or does need? And I mean, does that help, will that be helpful to them to get together with the professionals and everybody?
We could just ask the different, you know, building and fire if they've, if they're satisfied as far as.
Have a meeting, the administrative review meeting.
Right. So that's usually a preliminary application review, but.
They've been here for eight years, not preliminary.
Anyway, so, but at this time, at this time, based on SPR 1866 and the cease and desist order, they have met all the requirements. But that's where we found out that there had, that the floor area had been expanded. So that's the only reason that we're still having this conversation. So I, you know, we'll check into all the permits and stuff.
Yeah, especially floor area. We're gonna, we gotta hear from fire.
Of course. That's, that's why we're trying to clear this up. We're trying to meet every requirement that was given on the cease and desist. And thank you, Lori. I believe we're meeting, we're trying to finish everything that's been asked of us.
We're trying to help you. We want you to succeed.
And I just want to make sure you know, our only goal, that's why Alan comes with me, and that's why we hired an architect. We are trying to meet everything you guys are asking. I am trying to give it to you. That is the only goal here.
If it's gonna take an administrative review, or you have to go sit with Lori for, to help you with the aerial shots or whatever, whatever you need, be ready to come back. And Lori, back to that statutory extension. Is it 30 days at a time? 30, or give them?
I mean, I, you know, I suppose they could request the 65 days, but I'm not sure if they really need it.
What do you think? Where, so you, I almost got the sense, I almost got the sense you said the building department isn't getting back to you. I find it hard to believe.
They are in constant communication with our architect, trying to get a closed, it goes back to the bathroom situation, because now that the occupancy change, they want additional bathrooms per code. It's gone to the state to say that's not necessary.
You're challenging it. You're appealing it to the state.
Correct. It's, yes, correct. It'll destroy the entire business if we have to put that in. It doesn't make any sense aesthetically, like, for general use, to have 40 customers in there and to have six bathrooms in there. None of it makes sense, other than in a codebook.
So I would take the 60 days because if you lose that appeal, the building department's not signing off on this.
The building department and the architect, I don't know if that coincides.
So, so the building department is a separate entity. That we are only dealing with the zoning issues right now.
Right, but he's got an appeal going.
But that is not our purview.
I know it's not our purview, but.
And it doesn't affect our decision.
So we have him, we give him the 30 days, and then he's not ready?
So that they could ask for the additional.
Whatever way you want to do it, whatever, I'm, I'm willing to give you 60.
I understand. I believe.
Whatever you got, and, and I'd like to hear from the board. What do you guys think? I mean, Commissioner Petronella.
Can I say something?
Sure, please.
We're here to deal with a cease and desist regarding a zoning violation, and we're talking about building permits, electrical permits, and so forth. That doesn't fall within our purview, does it, Lori?
It does not.
It does not. So we're going off on a tangent.
But we do get comments from them, building.
And let it be.
Let it be.
And we make our decision based upon that. But I think, you know, they're here for zoning violations or cease and desist as it pertains to zoning violations. And I don't want to get, sit here and mandate that he's gotta do something to, for building permits or, that's, that, that's the other departments to tell us what to do.
I agree.
I just don't want to get off on that tangent.
No, I agree. And I'm just trying to help him facilitate this process for when he comes back to us because.
Right.
If we don't see positive opinions from the other agencies, you know, we're gonna be probably not able to, you know.
And, and, and the building department did respond. We'll handle questions on our permit through the permit process, which is normal. And, and that's, be as it may, and that's, that's gonna pretty much go through. The health department won't issue a permit, and that won't trigger until he applies action for building permits.
He's got an appeal on the bathrooms, which the health department gets involved in.
And just let it be at that. Let's deal with, with the zoning infractions.
Right. And. Right, and, and I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
No, thank you, Commissioner Petronal. I, I wasn't trying to get off on a tangent, I just wanted them to come back fully prepared. Commissioner Hulinski, please.
Just had one, kind of, while I was just looking through the paperwork again that we received, looking through the paperwork again that we received, and I noticed that in 2017, May 20, May 12, there was a public hearing, 2862. So you must have passed the public hearing back then, and some action must have been taken by the commission at that point. Okay, so is that how long these things have been open, since, since that public hearing and whatever activity during that timeframe took place? I'm just saying, this makes me feel better that we had a public hearing.
There's been several.
And this is the changed plan with the winery in it.
Correct.
Okay?
That's when we asked for the winery.
It's got, it's got the one, because I've been in your winery, you know, and I see the difference between the 2014 plan, where you had the walk-in cooler, and you had the electric brewing kettles and all that.
And you got to run the chronological.
Yeah, so, so those changes went through this, and, and apparently.
I think what spurred this on was the patio.
Okay, all right.
Well, that and opening the floor area to patrons.
It looks like it's pretty much there.
The patio and, and the, now, understanding the, sorry.
So, can we get a, entertain a motion to table?
Right, do you accept their request for the 30-day extension?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they've got it written there, so we'll put that in the file.
Can I get a motion for a 30-day extension?
Second.
Roll call, please, in this, if you would, yes.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Four.
Vincent Guerilla.
Four.
Joseph Ulay.
Four.
Karen Swinch.
Four.
John Petronal is four. So you approve through 30-day extension.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please keep communicating with staff.
Thank you.
So you're going to table the application at this point?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to table. Did you already make, you already made it?
We did the extension.
Oh, Commissioner Ulay.
Very much, well.
Yeah, he did, yeah. Put it in motion form now.
Why don't you re-up your motion then, that's right.
Mr. Commissioner, I make a motion to table this application till the third 30-day meeting.
Do I have a second? I second it.
Second, Commissioner DeGray. Hall in favor? Show of hands on this. Okay. That was a long one. Other business, other business, review bylaws.
So, Mr. Chairman, these are just really minor changes, for the most part. For instance, it says Director of Development Services many, many, many times, and it's now Director of Planning.
Mm-hmm.
Like, under Article Four, membership, any, any resignation from the commission shall be in written form and transmitted to the office of the town clerk. That is the official method of doing that. So I just added those minor things. Section, Article Six, Section One, officers of the commission shall consist of the chairperson, vice chair, second vice chair, and secretary, one of whom shall be a member of the minority represented party. And then, I don't know, they had something referencing 1982 annual elections, so I just said, elections of officers are held in January of even-numbered years, just making it simple, straightforward. Next page, Article Seven, Section Five, again, another reference to resignation of officers shall be in written form to the office of the town clerk, another Director of Planning. We'd already modified the order of business. And on Article Eleven, Section Three, I just added, you know, it was discussing that we needed a stenographer, a recording secretary in person, and I just added, or on occasion virtually, you know, sometimes their kid might be sick, and they're just going to log on and take it from home, so just.
Know what's happening tonight?
Uh, no, we don't have a recording secretary right now. She, she resigned, and we're still looking for somebody, so. She's, she works for me part-time, though, so she's been doing them during the day.
Okay.
So, and that, that's sort of it.
So I had one thing, I think we spoke about it.
Yeah.
Under conducting public hearings. I would like to see if we can get a timeframe in there for each person coming up, talking, kind of mirroring what council does and any other board, just in case we get 100 people in the room, I'd like to be able to say, and we'll bring them back up a second time, but, and I want to open it up to the commission to see what they think, three minutes, five minutes, but I think we should have something.
Yeah, so.
Just so we can keep conduct and control of the meeting. So any, I'll open it up for, for suggestions and comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with that suggestion, I think we should put some time limits on people speaking, so we don't get all backed up when, when we have several people here, and everybody gets a chance to speak. So, I know years ago, when I was involved with, with the Board of Education, we had, I think we had designated three minutes the first time, and maybe two minutes the second time, something like that. I would, I would propose that, that we might want to consider something like that, and if anybody wants to modify the times, feel free, but I think that's, that's probably adequate.
Just out of curiosity, can we not, as, as a chairman, or as the chairman, Frank, can we not just say, if you see a big group of people here, not just turn around and you say, okay, we're going to put a limit on it? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure about Robert's Rules of Order, whether that's involved in that or not, but I'm just wondering if, if we need to put that kind of detail into writing in, in part of the rules, if, if you don't need it. I, I don't know whether we need it or not, I don't have any objection to it, I'm just saying, are we adding a detail that we don't need to add? If nobody's here, and they take five minutes, who cares? You know, that's, that's all I'm saying. Just a question.
Can I just answer?
Sure, yes, please.
From, from what I recall, it's in documentation on both the Board of Ed and Town Council, I believe.
Okay.
As, as minutes. And the reason that's in there is because when that first started, and you started to limit people, they said, well, where does it say I'm limited to three minutes? And, you know, you can't do this unless you have it, you know, and so on and so forth. So I think that was one of the issues, so I, I prefer to see it written down, so.
So if I could just interject, if we, if we look at Section Four, where it starts, the chairman shall then call for statements from the general public, and then it, without interference, and a second and third privilege for comments shall be allowed. So I agree with that, but how long do we let them do that? Because now you're talking about them coming up three times.
The three and two minutes, I, I don't have any problem with, but if you're going to put it there, then you also have to have it in the public participation, because how are you going to limit public participation?
I think Commissioner DeGray has an input.
I, I'm having some issue about the public hearing portion, because this, our decisions affect a community, not just a small, it's not like the town council or the Board of Ed, it is affecting a neighborhood, and there's rebuttal. We have council or the applicant, and then we have the public, and then the applicant, and then the public and rebuttal, so it could be several times. If we want to do it in the public participation, as they do it in the Board of Ed and in the town council, they don't have an applicant coming before them, they're just having public participation. I think we could limit it in public participation, but to limit it in our public hearing, I feel would be very unfair to the people who actually came out for, excuse me, their neighborhood. So, I mean, yeah, we've had some.
Did you take a look at that last, a couple of sentences in that section, where they can come up several times? If you look at.
Yeah, they can come up several times, but in public participation, we could limit it to twice in public participation, not public hearings.
The question is, right, but the question is about, comments with discussion is about specifically Section Four.
Right, I understand.
You're saying, no, you don't think we should have any time limits?
No.
Because it's not just that.
Because you can, at the time.
We represent the whole town of Ed field, not just the neighborhood.
Right, but again.
We're here to represent everybody.
You can get people from all over town, and again, you can make the statement, please, if somebody has already made their, don't re, repeat something that's already been said. You can say that at the beginning of the public hearing, so that cuts down. So I came in because X, Y, Z, Commissioner Guerilla came in for X, Y, Z, I've already spoke, I, you already had those questions answered.
But what's, what's to stop somebody from saying that we're stopping them from talking?
We're not stopping them.
Yeah, while somebody else already said it, and you can't, we can't, I mean, you can't tell people they can't say anything, you know what I'm saying? I, I just, again, we kind of, first, and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't want to, I don't want to get, like, any, anybody thinking that, you know, the other person just talked about that, we don't want to hear that from you.
Everybody keeps saying town council, Board of Ed, we're different from them, we have applicants, we have people that come to us for something.
But I'm looking for consistency, where people come to the meetings and insist.
Right, and consistently, we have allowed people to keep coming up, and we never timed them. The public participation part, I understand shortening, you know, because people can come up and give a whole dissertation.
But is it fair if there's 100 people here, and somebody comes up here and stays up there for a half an hour? It's not fair to us, it's not fair to anyone.
We can ask them to get to their point.
And you're going to say, stop? I mean, it's almost like you're stopping them from talking, that's what I don't want to do. I want there to be a mechanism to stop them from talking. I don't want to be saying, you know, being accused of us as a board saying, we're not letting you talk.
If you're repeating yourself several times, excuse me, you've already said that, can we move on to the next?
I don't know, it just raises kind of a confrontational, kind of, or.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Well, we want to let the rest of the board go first, or?
Oh, this might help their conversation and thoughts.
Sure, thank you.
So this is, this is our Bible, Mike Siskas, what's legally required.
I can't, I can't see that good, but I can see.
What's legally required? So this, this just came out, it came, it was a 2004 document, and they just renewed it, and it's fabulous, so it basically gives the planners all the requirements for everything. So, under the public hearing procedures, first of all, you've got to remember that this is about an application, this is not about, I'm, I'm upset because there isn't a stop sign here, or something like that. So this is strictly regarding the applications itself. So I'm just going to read two little sections to you. So first of all, the courts have adopted a policy of what they call fundamental fairness in administrative proceedings. The policy is intended to assure, among other things, that every interested party is given a fair opportunity to hear, review, submit, and comment on the testimony and evidence the agency will ultimately use to render its decision. So you've got to remember that. And then he does go on to talk about time limits on speakers. You can set time limits, however, we have not done that for minor applications, but for, and it says here, when hearing attracts a large crowd, the agency may choose to place initial time limits on speakers to assure that everyone gets to speak at a reasonable hour. Such limits are generally lawful, so long as they provide all attendees.
Generally lawful.
Generally lawful, so long as they provide all attendees with reasonable opportunities to make their presentations. So the idea there is, yeah, so, I mean, you've got 100 people in the audience, maybe that's when you do want to set it. I don't know if you want to have to set it every time that we have a public hearing, but that, that's just my opinion, and based on this.
I'm just thinking if it's in writing, we don't have to worry about it. And we don't, I, I don't have to be, or he doesn't have, or somebody doesn't have to be the one to tell somebody, okay, you're done. I, I don't, to me, it's kind of a.
I think if you say, before, the meet, when we're going to do the application, you say it then, you made the announcement, you've covered yourself to have it in writing for, and then it's like limiting people, and you're now saying, oh, you can't talk more than five minutes, but they may have really good points.
Thank you. So let's hear from the rest of the commission. Does anybody else down the other side have any thought on this? Mr. Petronal?
Yeah, I, I, I think what we've done in the past is generally when we call for the public to speak, and if, if we anticipate a lot of participants coming up, or people coming up public, we generally tell them, okay, we're going to open up the republic, and we're going to limit it at five minutes. Regardless, even if we have it in writing, we still need to do that, to remind them of that. So why have it in writing if, to me, you, you have an obligation, or we have an obligation as a commission, to let them know what, what, what we're going to be doing, and if we're going to time them out at five minutes, and then give them a second chance and so forth. So do we really need to put it in writing? But I, I think it's just, we just, we have an obligation to inform all members sitting, all, all public sitting in the audience of what we're going to be doing, so they can expect it, so they know the expectations. It's not just all of a sudden, have somebody come up in that five minutes and say, hey, you're all done, and, and you, and you think that, because it's in the rules, that we don't have to announce that.
No, we still have to announce.
I think that that's, so if you're going to announce it, why have it in writing? Or is there a need to do that?
I don't know, that's why I'm throwing it out there.
It's worked fine, in my opinion.
I'm just throwing it out there.
So, so far, so.
Commissioner.
I think, I think, from what I recall, yes, we had minutes in the, in the rules for, for the various boards, but it was really subject to the flexibility of the chairman at the time in a particular meeting. If there was something specific being said that was very important, and maybe took a little longer, then the person was given a leeway, okay, to do that, okay? So I think maybe a more generic thing, like, you know, subject to the, the chairman is responsible for maintaining order in the meeting, and can, is, is allowed to, you know, to, you know, restrict time, if, something like that, if anybody can come up with the words, that's, that's what I'm thinking, a generic statement saying, you know, chairman is allowed to set limits on, on, on speaking during a public hearing in the interest of clarity, and, and that everyone has opportunity to, to make comments and so on, to their satisfaction.
So, yeah, because I, I know if we go back to the hearing on the Felician sisters a year ago, where you had 100 people in here, people on a couple of different occasions, I know, once you had the list and they saw how many people, I know the chairman at that point just said, okay, we're going to limit this to, I don't know whether it was three or five minutes, but it was something, and then you'll have a second chance. That's what, my only question is, I have no objection with it, I'm just saying, okay, do we need it in writing?
That's all. And again, just, please, Mr. President.
I'm just looking at Article Six, Officers and Their Duties, Section Two, and I, I think this may cover us based on.
And Section Two, I'm sorry, under?
Article Six, Officers and Their Duties, Section Two, and I think this has relevance going off what Lori says in terms of, you know, what's, what's legally required. The chairperson shall preside at all meetings and hearings of the commission, and shall have the duties normally conferred by parliamentary usage on such officers. normally conferred by parliamentary usage on such officers." So it is very broad, but I think, again, going to Lori's explanation about what's legally required and what's legally accepted, is that I think setting time limits falls within the chairman's duties, personally. So I think, I don't think we need to add specific time limits, personally. I think that covers it. I think that, as we've done in the past, we announce it, you know, based on the chairman's discretion at the start of the meeting, as long as we're transparent and fair for all speakers. I think that's what we need to do.
Commissioner Grillo, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, I... Yes, sir. Yeah, all due respect, I agree. I, you do, we do have to announce it, or I should say, you usually, you have to announce it anyways, and it being in writing.
No, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to get this opinion from everybody on how you guys wanted to see how we conducted and kept things fair and moving along. And again, I don't want to just...
You know, it's fair. We've done it before, you and I. We've done it, and we've said it. You know, we got to cut it down, or let it go. And think about it, it covers us.
I'm in favor of letting people talk as long as they want. I mean, no...
Right. It covers us. So you just say it before the meeting if there's a lot, you know, be done with it, cut it down. If not, let it just ride, and save the trouble.
So you want to leave it to the discretion of the chair? Everybody good with that?
No.
I didn't want to leave it to my discretion.
We got you covered.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you for that. Okay. So, back to the bylaw review. Thank you. I appreciate it, that your confidence in me and trust that we could, you know, do this without any hoopla out there, you know. You know, we do, and like, let us, we have contentious applications, you know, to say the least. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to upset anybody, and keep everybody happy as we can.
I'll make a motion to accept the bylaws as proposed, April 11, 2024.
Motion on the floor?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Hrlinski? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? Got to do discussion again. I know we kind of beat it up a little bit, but any discussion? All in favor? Show of hands. Motion passes, unanimous. I lost my agenda. All right. 18. Applications to be received. None that are going to have a lot of people. No, I'm only kidding.
Okay. So we have public hearing 3090, which is at 145 and 153 South Road, application of Enfield Properties LLC, and owner Maplewood Village of Enfield LLC and Enfield Properties LLC for development of an apartment complex under the large flexible housing zone, zoning, map 55, lots 59 and 80 in the I-1 zone, Michael W. Haleku trustee. Oh, sorry, that's the next one. So, public hearing 3091, 138 North Maple Street, application of Michael W. Haleki trustee for Enfield Elks Lodge for expansion of a liquor permit, map 22, lot 12, owner the benevolent hall in the I-1 zone. And then SPR 1930, which is 90 Alden Avenue. This is actually just a parking reconfiguration, and so we're thinking that that might just be an administrative approval. They're not changing the number of parking, they're just making it a nicer, circuitous route right over here.
That'd be the old Polish home?
Pardon?
The old Polish home, 90 Alden.
No, 90 Alden.
Oh, the apartments. Yes.
The apartments, yeah. So they're just basically making a circular route around, and we'll have everybody review it. But that, so we think we'll just make that admin approval, if that's okay.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, could you go back to the first one? What was it, a public hearing? I'm sorry?
3090 or 3091.
Did you say South Road?
Yep. 145 and 153 South Road.
And it's for?
Apartments.
Okay.
This is the large flexible zoning that we, regulation that we have. So it's basically kind of a transition zone. So because it's I-1, and I think residential.
And should we expect this on the next agenda?
Um, maybe.
Hmm.
Most likely, yeah, most likely. Actually, most likely, you'll see both of those on there. So.
Not depending on whether you get an assistant or not?
Maybe. No, I believe that we'll be able to handle this.
Are you all set, Lori?
Yep, that's it.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to get the floor, if you want to add anything else, anything come up?
No.
Okay. Opportunities and unresolved issues? Executive section? That's next week, next meeting. Is there a motion? We got to let Linda first.
George, George.
All right. Motion. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Grillo. All in favor to adjourn?
We need a discussion on that.
Oh, do we? Oh, that's right. We need a discussion on whether we get adjourned or not. I'll keep you here all night. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.